...council meeting for June 20th, 2017 to order. I would ask that everybody stand and rise with us for the flag salute. That Mr. Knapp will be introducing our guest who's leading us in the flag salute this evening. But I first want to introduce who will be leading us in prayer this evening. He is a former city council member and business owner, and he is my dad. So dad, would you lead us in prayer?
Before or after the flag?
Right now's good.
Please bow your head. Father God, thank you for the opportunity that we have to live in a town that we love. Thank you for the opportunity for these men and women that give of themselves to help run the business of the city. Be with us tonight. In prayer. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Tonight's flag salute will be read by, given, led by Dr. Tom Joyce. Dr. Joyce has been both a resident and a business owner in Bethany for 31 of his 41 years as a chiropractor. He is a veteran, having served in Vietnam as a long-range reconnaissance sergeant in the First Cavalry Division. Dr. Joyce has been a board member of the Oklahoma Veterans Memorial Foundation for 18 years, and he currently serves as vice president of the board. He and his wife Woody moved to Bethany in 1976. They welcomed their second grandchild just this last Friday night. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Tom Joyce.
Thank you. Kindly face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It would be honored to do that.
Tonight, we need to honor Bethany's very own, and we're proud and honored to be able to do so. With Mr. Biggers, would you come join us down here, please? Chief Biggers, I'm going to read this here in a second, but I refer to him as the legendary Jerry Biggers. That's just how I refer to him. We have a proclamation. Whereas Jerry Ross Biggers was born on February 16th, 1937, to Dorothy and Bill Ross Biggers. And whereas he attended Bethany Public Schools for 12 years, where he played baseball on Bethany's first state championship team in 1955, and was one of only 25 chosen in 1955 for the baseball Hall of Fame team. And whereas, after graduating in 1955, he spent 18 months in the Army before becoming patrolman for the Bethany Police Department. And whereas, in 1962, he joined the Oklahoma Highway Patrol and was promoted to supervisor, second lieutenant in 1968. And whereas, in 1972, he was promoted to troop commander, first lieutenant, and then promoted to captain in 1976, where he served as western zone commander. And whereas, in 1978, he was promoted to major, where he served as eastern division commander before being promoted to chief, colonel of the Oklahoma Highway Patrol in 1980. And whereas, in 1983, he received his master's degree before retiring on April 4th, 1986, being first person to be promoted through the ranks from trooper to chief of the patrol. And whereas, from 1986 to 1997, he served as undersheriff at the Oklahoma County Sheriff's Office, taught criminal justice at OSU OKC in 1997, served as president of the Oklahoma Retired Troopers Association for six years, and five years as first vice president of the retired Oklahoma Police Officers Association. And whereas, in addition to being a master carpenter and master gardener, he is also a loving father of five children and 13 grandchildren. Therefore, I, Mayor K.P. Westmoreland, hereby declare June 20th, 2017, as Jerry Ross Biggers Day in the City of Bethany. You're also giving him a key to the city. Thank you very much.
So much.
You made my day. Well, thank you for all your years of service.
I would introduce my family to y'all, but I know you've got work to do, and it'd take half the night for you to introduce.
Thank you. Item one is a consent docket, items A through G. Do we have any questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Item two, approval of resolution number 1444, adopting fiscal year 2018 budget for the general fund, miscellaneous other funds, and various trusts, affirming the authority of the city manager to make transfers within the general fund and appropriating funds from the capital improvement fund for specified equipment and projects. Are there any questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
I have a question. I wanted somebody to explain to me, there was an item in the budget there for $300 and some thousand dollars for public transportation. Help me to think that through.
Yes, as part of the comp plan, you might recall, it was designated for the city to consider public transportation, public transit. While I'm visiting, we maybe need to pull that number up. I don't believe that was the final number that we wound up with. But the original concept was to consider connecting into embark. But as we looked at it further, there may be other options that may be more viable for us, such as perhaps we might even be able to operate our own public transit program. But that project still is yet to be vetted, and so it's in the budget, again, as a part of the, yeah, that's what I thought was, as part of the comp plan. And the number's actually 162,500.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I might like to make a suggestion that we not put that particular thing in there, and after it's been vetted and we see what it's going to really be, then we could vote to transfer funds into it to make it operational.
Would starting up a system like that, will that absolutely require a vote of the council?
Yes, to Tim, because he's going to use the word embark, and that would be a terrible pun, but to, let me do it anyway, since I already let it out. So if we were going to embark on some kind of project like that, of course, it would be beyond the spending authority of the city manager, so of course, it would require council approval. So, you know, and we have the budget already balanced, so we've been through our workshops. My suggestion would be to leave it in as intact, and then if we choose not to do it later, then that would free up money to either go into more into savings or to go into some other project if you so choose.
That's what I'm fearful of, is it'll go into another project. And the same light is, there's something in here about a recycling program that we were, that was in the budget. And in my long tenure on this council, we have tried both of these particular approaches of transportation with Oklahoma City and with the recycling projects that we have, and neither one of them were anywhere close to a roaring success.
So if you'll forgive me, I'm a glass half-full kind of person. I think that, I think that whatever may have happened at the time, I don't know what may have happened, but I do know that we kind of have a group of can-do folks today, and the devil's in the details of how that actually gets rolled out. I think that we could potentially have a tremendously successful program if we do it the right way, that could benefit a lot of folks in Bethany through public transit. But like I said, the devil's still in the details, and we haven't yet vetted that yet.
At the time, we had probably, I'm pretty sure that I remember these figures, about a 15% use of the recycling program. And the bus that we, the Oklahoma City Transit System, I think our average riders were six per day. And that is a figure that I'm pretty well remember, because as everyone will know, I'm not a big spender. And that just seemed to stick in my mind, that it was, and it didn't seem to improve anything, because these people, when it went away or before it came on, it was, they seemed to survive, and when it went off, they seemed to survive. And it was not, you know, a roaring success, and the amount of money that we have would be better well-spent, I think, on items that affect a larger number of people, like street resurfacing and the water situation that we have going on, because that is going to be extremely expensive. And I think we should husband our funds as much as we possibly can on items that are absolutely necessary for the City of Bethany and for the whole populace of the City of Bethany. And those are two of the things that I have. I've been through the budget very, pretty much, I was up to about 1:00 last night going through it, and that's the reason I was so late getting my picture taken today. But it was, it was a budget that I think that there was a lot of, a lot of, lot of things that were put in there that we need to do, but it's, I think they need some very strenuous thought. That's all I have to say on the budget.
Councilor Shirey, how long ago did we have curbside recycling in Bethany? I've never heard of it.
It was during Mr. Gertson's tenure here, which concluded in about 1996, I'd say 1994. And the bus, particular bus, was about 1994. And there was, there was no real, in this budget, there was nothing that could really be tied down tight on that, except that it is a feeling that this country has that if we don't do something about it, the country's going to collapse. I think if we spend money where we don't need to spend money, we spend it where we need to spend money, then it would be much better.
If I may interrupt, Councilor Shirey, the Bethany Recycling Task Force, I think, will provide the data we need to implement a recycling program, whether or not it's feasible or not, and what would be the most effective way to use those resources and the budget amount that we've allocated. So I think it is a project in progress, and the feasibility needs to be determined to find the best way to implement recycling in Bethany. I think there is a group of people who are willing to do that now, and we need to see how committed they are to the process, and I think the task force will allow that to happen.
Well, we had this, we had the same feeling in 1994, that it was, so we proceeded with, we had a assistant city manager who did an extremely diligent job of putting it together, and it just didn't fly. And, you know, there's an old saying out there that if you keep doing things over and over, and they don't work, that's insane.
I can appreciate that. For purposes of this item, I think we should allow the Bethany residents an opportunity to implement a recycling program and to participate. And if that's going to happen, they will have to commit to the process, and we need to facilitate that as best we can.
Mr. Knapp, did you have something?
Well, I was going to ask if you remembered how long ago that was, but that was addressed. The other thing was, I do recall being at those comprehensive plan meetings, and when we surveyed the audience, so to speak, I think there was about 100 people at two different meetings. That was, the recycling was an overwhelming thing that people wanted. I can't recall what the figures were for transportation, but I know that was addressed in the comprehensive plan as well. That's all.
I think it ought to be looked at. I'm sorry, I don't know if you're done yet. But, and if the citizens want it, I agree, they ought to have it, but we'll see when they come, time to pay it out of their pocket, how much they want it. Because a city this size, I've never read, heard about, or dreamed of that can possibly do it and not lose money. It just, it drives up costs. Maybe you know something I've never heard of, one that can do it and make money. But getting back to, what you said, the devil's in the details, I couldn't agree more on any of this. And you have to be a glasses-half-full person, or you'd go crazy doing this. But the comprehensive plan, if our goal, our goal should not be to 100% fund that comprehensive plan. That comprehensive plan was put together as a rough, rough, rough outline, as a changing plan, as a growing plan. There are, there are a lot of things in that comprehensive plan that half the people in Bethany disagree with. And if we were going to follow that comprehensive plan by the letter, we would already have abandoned that plan, because at the very start of that plan, the first thing it says we have to do is change the constitution or change our charter and get rid of some language. And that, nobody wants to take that fight on, including myself. But without doing that, it says right in that comprehensive plan to just abandon the rest of the comprehensive plan. You need to read that part of the comprehensive plan. If we're not willing to change some things in the charter, then quit reading now. So our goal should not be to fund the comprehensive plan 100%, because a lot of it doesn't need to be funded. So just don't, don't take that as gospel. And we were even told that, we actually finished the comprehensive plan ourselves, and we say ourselves, I don't include myself at all, mainly the Steves. They finished that comprehensive plan, the company was in discompletely disarray that did it. I don't know what happened to them, they all kind of scattered, and there was a whole bunch of mess at the very end of that thing. But basically, our own people finished that comprehensive plan.
And Mr. Carlson?
And he goes without saying, Mr. Carlson, definitely, he was the glue that stuck it together, but our people finished that plan. So just don't take that, we need to fund 100% of that comprehensive plan.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, one of the issues in the budget is related to the sanitary sewer projects, and that includes 48th and Central. And can I get an explanation as to the extent of that project and how that will be implemented this next fiscal year?
Steve Caden, would you mind fielding that?
Yes, sir. The project is now in the easement acquisition phase. The design engineers identified an alignment that they think will be optimal, and so now we have to go approach each individual landowner and acquire the easement. And obviously, if anybody doesn't want to go for it, we may have to realign or come up with something like that. Once those easements are obtained, they can produce the final design documents, and we'll go through the normal bid process. It's a relatively short job, but kind of nasty in the backyard sense, so it will probably take a few months for actual construction to be done.
So that, like, six months is feasible?
Yes.
Very good.
Well, Steve, is there, how much money is in there for storm? Is there anything planned for storm? Or drainage?
Well, and I think for clarification, is that not included for storm and sewer? We talked about that at the workshop related to the tin horns and things like that, especially in Ward 2.
Yes, we did. I'm trying to find that on which page that's on.
Another city gave up on drainage work after a bomb issue fell, remember?
Yes, it's on page two of the CIP, and it's $230,000 storm water maintenance program.
So it's just basic maintenance, nothing planned?
We'll do whatever we can do, whatever makes the most sense.
We need to put some kind of long-term plan together, it's going to be very expensive.
Agreed, and I believe that's part of what the visioning process that was started in the BDNA, was to start that process, to begin looking at that.
Well, and if you're there at the BDNA, most people in the audience and on city council were there, that was an issue that was discussed, so that we can begin the process of improving the drainage, cleaning out the drain inlets, and finding a solution in-house as best we can, and then identify the problems, communicate that to the community, and find a solution. And so that was good news, to the extent that it was a concern for the residents of Ward 2, and I think it's for all other residents in Bethany, it's a priority that we need to take care of.
Mr. Palmer, I certainly agree with you on that particular project, and I think that that's something that we should put our shoulder to the wheel on and get moving. It's been laying around for two years or more, it's actually been laying around for 55, 60 years, but it needs to be taken care of or addressed.
I had a question for Mr. Cox, if I could, please.
Yes, sir.
And I'm just, I'm doing this just for my own clarification, so I really don't know what I'm talking about, so maybe you can help me. You had said we have X number of dollars appropriated for public transportation. We're going to do a study to see if it's feasible, if it's not, then we could use that, those funds for some other project. Those X number of dollars set aside for that project, if it goes to a different project, does that different project come before the council again, or is that the discretion of the manager?
Well, the authority that you all have approved, I'm sorry, a little bit loud there, the authority that you all have approved is just $25,000 for the city manager. There is some authority for transferring within the budget if, as necessary, but a fund of that size, it would come back to you all if we wanted to do something, something different.
Well, and on the public transportation issue, as a part of my campaign, I'll share with the city council, the beauty college here in downtown Bethany, there are students who need a source of transportation to get to the college, and that was an issue that came up, and I think it's a legitimate concern that we should study and address. And that's just one example of how a bus system, trolley system, would be beneficial, to the extent it would be anything like embark, I don't think it would be, but it could help our local economy, it could help the residents, within budget, Mr. Shirey.
Do we have a motion?
A move, we accept the budget as proposed.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Please cast your votes.
Excuse me. Could we have a reason for the abstention? Doesn't there need to be a conflict of interest?
No, he doesn't have to give a reason whatsoever. It's counted either a yes or a no, and he does not have to explain his vote.
Could the attorney answer that?
Okay.
Mr. Davis?
There's nothing in the rules that requires anyone to state the reason for abstaining.
So it doesn't need to be a conflict of interest or anything where we're not being pressed?
Your rules are completely silent on that. It's just recognizing it as an extension as a type of vote, that's all.
It says, I'm going to be counted as either a yes or a no.
That's right. That's probably something the charter review committee will look at, is that provision that it's not counted under state law, an abstention counts as a no vote. And, you know, I've heard some interest in maybe changing our charter provide that an abstention is a no vote, so.
And I know sometimes...
I imagine that's something the charter committee will be looking at.
Sometimes if you're going to abstain from a vote, then you need to leave the room before it comes up, and so that could be another consideration.
Well, that went, that went out in the Virginia Legislature in the, in the 1600s, because a lot of old men couldn't get up and get out, so they decided to vote as an extension, abstention.
Okay, item three, adoption of resolution number 1446, approving the formation of a recycling task force for review of recycling in the City of Bethany, determining the number of committee members, authorizing the approval of procedure for selection of members for the committee, and authorizing mayor to appoint the members. Do we have any discussion? I do have one thing I would like to add to this, thinking about during my campaign, I talked about the need, I believe there's a need to mentor a younger generation to be able to take our place someday and lead this city, and I think it might be a good idea to have a younger, younger people, teenagers, youths of some sort, representing on a task force, and this one might be a good one for them to be a part of, so I just wanted to throw that out there. Do we have any discussion or any comment?
I think this is a great idea. I think it's an opportunity for the community to participate and make recommendations that are feasible and would be economical and viable for the community. We don't need to do everything, but we certainly need to do something, and I think this is the step in the right direction.
Yes, offer a couple of comments?
Yes.
We have proposed that we set up this recycling task force, not because we need to have more task forces and more committees, but actually, we do, because we have 20,000 people in the community of Bethany, and the, I've been involved in all of our committee meetings, these new initiatives and task forces that we've started up, and it's been wonderful. It's been a great, it's great to see enthusiasm, it's been...
it's been wonderful. It's been a great, it's great to see enthusiasm. It's been great to see the energy that our folks in our community are wishing to expend, to help to build our community and make it better. And, and I think this is one of those, we, we talked about it already, just a little bit during our budget conversation, that there is, I think, a pretty strong interest in our community to, for us to explore this. Why, why not engage our community in, in being involved in actually that determination versus, you know, us just deciding for them, well, either to do it or not to do it. So I, I think that is really good. I do want to point out one quick thing that we mentioned in here, too. I don't know that, when you think of recycling, that it necessarily would be a for-profit kind of business. Maybe there might be a day and time when it might be the case. But I think the real way to think about it is it's the right thing to do for the environment, but even probably more applicable to our budgetary things, if we can divert trash and tonnage out of the landfill, that's less that we have to pay for, so we can decrease our costs. Doesn't necessarily make money, but we decrease our costs. So in a way, we kind of win from that. So that's all I have, sir.
If we do create a task force, the task force, we need to go into each meeting, it's got, you talk about dollars. That's all you talk about. Because if they, if it does up the environment, it does up the landfills, all those things, that's great. Those all have a cost associated with it. So I mean, any, anything we're talking about is basically dollars, and whether the citizens are willing to pay for it or not. So if you have a meeting about recycling without talking about dollars, you're not having a meeting about the true, the true sense of it, what it is. I mean, I don't know if you can opt out some people. You really couldn't opt out some and, and put some in.
So maybe I can address your, your comments with a couple of things. The first is, respectfully, I, I think there, there are some other items out there that are, are beyond dollars. Dollars are very important, and, and they will be part of the conversation. But I, I think there are logistical things about where some of these types of recyclables might go to, and who might be the receptacle of them. And once again, dollars do come back into that, that conversation. And the, the other part I was going to share was that I, I actually have been a part of a similar process we did in a community that I was with before, where we had folks in the community that were engaged in it. And they were actually, now, the finding there was that, that it wasn't feasible because of the, the amount of mileage that the, some of the recyclables had to be shipped. However, there was, there were many things that were talked about, including not a mandatory, you have to participate, but a incentivized opt-in program. So if they opt in, there's maybe some sort of incentive that they might be able to gain.
And I, I think opting in, incentivizing opting in is, is great. When the oil bust hit and I went out to the West Coast to work, you didn't have a choice. You, you did, red, blue, green. You know, you recycled. But the opposite coin of that is you either incentivize or you punish. Because if someone doesn't recycle, let's say they're elderly, or they just want, don't want to participate, and they say it's more government intervention, I'm not going to participate, then you have to have enforcement. Then you have to have a penalty, that kind of thing. So it's just a, it is a road to go down. But if we, if we do form a committee, I just want to make sure, if, if you don't talk about dollars, you're wasting your time, is what I just want to make sure.
If I may, if you look at the proposal that's provided, it, it discusses feasibility and starting the process. There are available grants for recycling, and the city of Bethany, at this point, is not doing anything. So we can take that approach initially to find the funding for projects that would apply to Bethany now. The fact that we aren't doing anything, I mean, let me say that again, we are not doing anything when it comes to recycling. So we need to implement this in a manner that's feasible under the budget, and we get residents to participate. It's a win-win in my book.
I'm going to stand up for our public work guys here for a second, because I disagree with that. You go out there and dump stuff, you do have to separate it.
Of course.
And it is hard work.
I, I understand that the trash pickup and that they do hard work, and they do it well. But for partic, and I should clarify, we need to have residents who are into, want to recycle. And so we can help the city. We can help the city workers, and we can lower the amount we put into the landfill. I think it's a win-win and...
This is, no, just interrupt, you're not, I'm sorry, just for healthy debate. We should have residents that want to recycle.
Yes.
That's, we should have residents that want to recycle.
We do have residents that want to recycle.
We do have. Okay, big difference.
I think if there's an opportunity, then they can recycle. And that's what we need to provide.
To say that we should have residents that want to recycle is different than, we do have residents.
I think there's an assumption that senior citizens don't want to recycle. Southern Plaza has recycling, and we all pay for it because we believe in it. And we have separate dumpsters, and people come and pick it up, and we pay extra for that. But we believe in recycling, and we voted to do that. So I don't think we can say that all senior citizens are irresponsible or don't want to pay the extra money. They do feel strongly about it.
Who picks that up? Is it just, is it our guys that pick it up, or is it a different company?
I'd make a motion to pass the resolution number 1446.
Second it.
Do we want to, it's going to be seven board members? And if we're talking about having high schoolers or, or younger crowd on it, which I'm a fan of, do we want to amend that seven members, or to make it to where, I guess we could just have extra show up. But I mean, do we want X number of adults on it, with maybe amended to four high schoolers or something of that sort?
Homeowners or stakeholders would be a good...
Because you, you've mentioned high schoolers. I just, I mean...
Yeah, I'm open to...
We don't want, which is great, but we don't want seven high schoolers.
No, yeah, we, we need some adults there.
Or can we just give the mayor the discretion on that, or?
Could, could we recommend people?
Yeah, I'm all for that. Definitely.
The younger ones can just attend, in my mind. They could just attend the meetings.
If interested.
They don't necessarily have to be a board member, just...
You might want me to...
The younger ones could just attend the meetings, in my mind. They don't necessarily have to be a board member or anything. That's kind of what I'm thinking about, you know, as we're talking about this.
I'm open to what, to any suggestion, any way that that wants to be structured. Is that the way you'd like it to be? Be able to attend meetings, if interested?
So seven members plus any high schoolers, or, or just your discretion?
I think that's, you know, seven members and high schoolers could attend, if they're, if they're interested in recycling, or, I mean, city government, how this stuff, the process works.
If I could maybe make a, a suggestion, you might still have the high schoolers fill out the application form indicated versus just showing up. I think that provides a little bit of ownership that they wish to be in it. It's a simple application. And then they can provide it to you, and then you all could assign four or, or 12. I think so long as you have the seven board members that can make a decision, make a recommendation, so we don't wind up having, it, it's hard, you know, the number, the larger you make a group, trying to, you know, get...
Well, and I think the mayor's mentioned a mentorship situational program. Maybe this would be a good opportunity to start that.
So do we need to amend this for that, or would that allow for mentorship still?
Yeah, I think, I think it's adequate, and...
Okay.
These people you're talking about would not be voting members of the committee, but they're certainly going to have input. So I don't see any reason to change it.
So do I have a motion?
Motion in a second.
And a second? Please cast your votes. Item four, approval of ordinance number 1934, amending title 15 of the Bethany Code of Ordinances, sections 150.006, 150.026, 150.048, 150.073, and 98.01, pertaining to members of Board of Appeals under International Building Code, International Mechanical Code, International Plumbing Code, and National Electric Code, and pertaining to Board of Appeals under the International Property Maintenance Code. Approval of ordinance number 1934 on reading by title only.
Do you have a staff report for, on this?
Yeah, I would like to invite Steve Kaden to provide the staff report, if you would, please.
Thank you. This is, I don't want to call it a cleanup ordinance, but it kind of is. The model codes that the city has adopted require a Board of Appeals. We've kind of had one on the books forever. No one in this building, I think, can ever remember an appeal over one of the building codes, but they are required. Two of the model codes are just pretty general and unspecific about the qualifications. Two of them spell out a five-member board with very stringent qualifications. Unfortunately, a city the size of Bethany would have a hard time coming up with a five-member board with those qualifications that would be willing to sit. Staff is recommending using the Board of Adjustment as the Board of Appeals for all of the model codes. They currently sit as, as the appeal boards for any zoning case. Those have, have occurred, and the board does a very good job. As a bonus, two of the people on the Board of Adjustment are currently one of the types that would be specified anyway, so we're actually getting extra credit from the ISO on that. So in that regard, again, staff would recommend, since the Board of Appeals is already, a Board of Adjustment is already in that appeals role, and they've done a good job, from a practical point of view, we think it would be the best and, and most efficient way to proceed, as far as establishing these as the Board of Appeals boards for all of the model codes.
So are these the same people with two titles, or does one group disappear and the other one, do we no longer have a Board of Adjustment, but we have a Board of Appeals?
No, they would still be the Board of Adjustment. It's just that if anyone ever appealed the decision of a co-official, we would adjourn or convene them, and they would make the decision. Thank you.
I don't think you got a motion, or a motion or a second to read by title on the...
Some of...
Second.
Please cast your votes.
I'll be glad to read this, except it's just exactly what the mayor just read off the agenda, unless you want me to read it again. The ordinance has...
Now, I don't have to read all that.
Seven enacting sections and a separate section eight, which is the emergency clause. I might just comment. All the time I've been at the city, I've never known any of these appeals from the building codes to come forward. That's not to say they wouldn't, but with our enforcement of the Exterior Maintenance Code or the Property Maintenance Code, my guess is that if there are appeals, that's likely where it will come from. And I think this is a good way to have that in place in the event it does arise.
I move approval of ordinance number 1934 as presented.
Yes, item B. Please cast your votes. Item C, approval of section eight, ordinance number 1934, the emergency section.
I have a question on that. Is there an, an urgent need, that we need an emergency clause, or?
No, sir. We, we were just asked to always put this on the agenda, so that's, it's, they're just out of routine.
Please cast your votes. Oh, there was a motion? Do I have a motion? No motion? Okay.
Was, was there a request for the, the last item?
Emergency clause.
Emergency clause.
Yes, I believe he asked for a motion, and no one made one.
Item five, approval of ordinance number 1935, amending title 11 of the Bethany Code of Ordinances by repealing section 118.05, amending sections 118.06, pertaining to the wrecker, to wrecker referral licensing requirements, removing requirement for public hearing before City Council on issuance of wrecker referral license, authoring city manager to issue the wrecker referral license.
I move we accept item five A, reading by title only.
I'll second that.
Please cast your votes.
Likewise, the item read from the agenda is the exact title of the ordinance, unless someone wants me to read it again. I think that item A is accomplished. Be appropriate to move on to item B.
Approval of sections one through four, ordinance number 1935.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
What's the precipice for this?
I can give you a brief history if you want to.
I mean, I know how to work.
You mean precedent?
Not precipice, right? I don't have my dictionary on me. What do I say, precipice?
I think there's a big difference, if you're on the clip.
Not precedent, I think precipice.
I think you said precipice. I don't know. It's precedent, correct, council?
No, no, not precedent, precipice. What, what's the reason? How about that?
I'll, I'll give you a little history on it. Twenty or more years ago, there were several wrecker companies vying for the city's business. And there were at least two wrecker companies located in the community, and there was some question whether one of them provided quality service to the residents. And therefore, this process was initiated where you have to go through elaborate application and have a public hearing before the City Council, where citizens can come forward and complain. And, and the ordinance is pretty clear, and it sets forth all of the criteria for issuance of the license. Currently, we have two operators in Bethany. They both meet all of the licensing criteria. And from reports I have, there are no complaints by any. We have a sort of a rotating system between the two. And this is really not a lot different than licensing any other businesses. At, at the time, though, it was, there was rather intense competition, and that was the purpose of this. And I don't, I don't see any necessity for the public hearing anymore.
Well, there was one, there was one for years until four years ago, and then Twister moved to town. And there was Twister, and then the other one.
Right. And there was a third one in one day.
Was there? That was a long time ago. But I mean, is there no competitive? I know that the rights are set by the legislature, but is there any competitive bidding between the two and the city?
No, we, we rotate between them. They both meet all of our criteria. They have to have a storage yard within the city limits. That knocks out wrecker companies that have storage yards in Oklahoma City, so that if somebody's car is impounded, they don't have to go to northeast Oklahoma City to pick it up. And then the equipment they have to have is all specified, and we do background checks on all of their employees. So they're vetted well. It all goes through the police department. And they're sitting here. I, I've not heard any complaints about the two applicants that we have. And you just approved last time, I believe, isn't that right, JD?
Yes.
Yeah, we just approved the two applicants. And if you recall, at the public hearing, there was zero input, and I don't think there has been for 10 years.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Please cast your votes. Item C, the emergency section. No motion. Item Six. Approval of reschedule, to reschedule the July eleventh, two thousand seventeen regular City Council meeting to Thursday, July sixth, two thousand seventeen, at seven AM. The first regular meeting falls on July fourth, two thousand seventeen, which is a legal holiday, and was therefore deemed canceled and rescheduled to the following Tuesday, July eleventh, two thousand seventeen. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just as long as there's a lot of coffee, I'm good.
So is this a special meeting, or?
It's the council meeting.
Seven AM. The day after July four, right after July four.
Two days after.
Does anybody go to the lake here, or anything? I mean...
Why, what's the purpose of rescheduling? Why don't we leave it?
My, my.
I mean, a year ago, we decided to do it the following Tuesday, July eleventh. Is there a reason why we need to have it sooner?
May I answer? So, a couple of things for your consideration. You all can meet whenever you'd like to. We had just suggested that, uh, the way the, you, we had a fairly heavy meeting tonight, uh, July, the, the second meeting in July is going to be a fairly heavy meeting. But the first meeting in July was shaping up to where I don't anticipate us having any business items, actually, other than just paying bills. So there'll be nothing other than consent docket that will be on it. So, uh, we don't even have, require that everyone be there, just so long as we have quorum to approve the bill paying. And then, um, we can return to July the twenty-eighth, I believe, is the next meeting.
Will, will that, will that cause us any problem on vendors that probably will need their money before this period? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, that, actually, that, that was one of the reasons I had, I had proposed that maybe we consider meeting on July sixth rather than a whole week later, because meeting the whole week later does start creating that, because you have a longer gap between bill paying.
Yes, I, I, that would, I think, as, as close as we could get it, uh, you know, maybe even Monday night. Well, we're, we're, I mean, hey, uh, some of our city, city councilmen have a meeting on Monday morning.
Some of us have a lot of celebration with the vets we deal with, too, at the lake that we have to deal with, you know?
Well, if, if, if that's, if the city council is coming between you and having a good time, uh...
We take boys to, you know, camp out and things like that, do our worst big week.
Would you speak a little closer to your mic? I didn't hear you.
I, I would. I think that's fine, but I would suggest that we do keep it to consent docket only. Because if we add anything to that, that could be a bad image of us rescheduling it, so. And with that, I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Second.
If it makes any difference, I'll bring donuts.
It does.
Oh, yeah, I mean, uh...
Please cast your votes.
Oh, the, the second meeting is July eighteenth, the clarification.
Item Seven, Call to the Public. Any citizen who would like to address, uh, please speak up, speak, stand to the microphone and address us. I would ask that you would direct all your comments or questions to me, the mayor. No one may address or question any individual governing body member or staff member. Anybody have anything they'd like to say? Item Eight, City Attorney's Report.
All my items were listed on the agenda.
Item Nine, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a few things tonight. So, uh, two thousand fifteen marked the best year that Bethany had had as far as sales taxes are concerned. Two thousand sixteen overshadowed that and marked the new best year. And we have our new numbers in for two thousand seventeen, and once again, we've, uh, we have had our best year ever. So, four point eight seven million dollars is our total for the current fiscal year that we are just now closing up at the end of the month. And you ask, well, how could that be the total when we still have a couple of weeks ago? It's the way the state provides their accounting to us. So, anyway, we are up one hundred twenty thousand dollars over last year, so four point eight seven million. So congratulations to the folks of our good community and, and the sales that they have done. I wanted to share with you also that this past week, I had a really good meeting with, uh, the Executive Director of the Association of County Governments of Oklahoma, ACOG as it's known. We, uh, during, actually, ever since I, I came here, I noticed that in our streets revenue, that it's, um, kind of flat. In fact, like, we don't receive revenues for streets necessarily. And, uh, I'm, I come from other states where there is an appropriation. So I kind of looked into that, and it turns out that Oklahoma is still utilizing an older system where the federal highway funds come into the state, and then the state gives them to ACOG and to INCOG, which is a group up by Tulsa, and then there's a third group as well. And then those groups then, uh, put together competitions, and then cities compete for that little pot, the pot of money. And what, uh, what I'm accustomed to is those federal highway funds come into the state, and then the state divvies those up based upon population. So the community I came from, Alliance, Nebraska, population ten thousand. Our appropriation, I just, I just, uh, exchanged messages with our finance director just yesterday and today. Nine hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars per year is what their, their number is looking to be at for this year. So, that really prompted the conversation to occur with ACOG. And, uh, when the Executive Director came here, I was a little hesitant, because I, yeah, anyway, uh, I didn't want to tell them how to do things, but I wanted to introduce an idea. And I introduced the idea, and it was extremely well received. Apparently, other cities that are members of ACOG, some of them have been, uh, not, have received as many funds as some other communities have in state, or federal highway funds. And so there seems to be an interest in maybe doing things differently. So things won't happen overnight, uh, but we're gonna keep working on that. I asked the mayor earlier today if maybe the city might consider appointing me to the transportation group of ACOG. I'd like to participate with them and provide a little bit of additional input when we can. So, encouraging with that, and that would sure go a long way to the street projects that we want to do in our community. One other thing I might mention real quickly, what we did there, uh, Nebraska just recently changed to this new system. And, but you can bank on those monies, I mean, they're plus or minus a little bit, but you can bank on them every year. And what our city did was, we actually issued federal highway allocation anticipation bond. And so we did a million dollars worth of projects, Alliance is under construction right now with several projects. And you, you buy them at today's dollars versus future dollars, which, you know, it gets more expensive. So, I wanted to point that out, that, that could have some significant impact for us down the road if we keep after it. Code enforcement, I've got some good news there. Our, you know, notices of violations, six hundred forty-three to date as of today. Uh, and of those, four hundred seventy-four have been closed. So, again, uh, congratulations to our staff on the job very well done on that, and to the mayor's task force. I, I never want to fail to mention that. That's such a nice thing that we've, uh, we've done for our community with that. I might also share, if, on your way out or into the building, in the next couple of times, if you'd like to take a look, we have found some old drawings in the attic of City Hall. And these old drawings were done of our various parks and public facilities and some ideas that were, or had come up with, not in two thousand seventeen, not two thousand seven, not nineteen ninety-seven, but nineteen ninety. So going back a long, long way, and there's some really pretty neat ideas in there. So you might just look around and see some of the concepts that they come up with. I mentioned earlier that our, our various initiatives and groups have been meeting. The Parks Committee did a full tour this past week of all of thirteen of our parks. I need to look up the number and see how we compare with parks per capita or acreage per, per square mile compared to everybody else. I bet it's pretty high with our five, five square miles and Eldline Park and our other parks. So anyway, our initiatives are going well. Our Charter Review Committee, uh, we do have a date, uh, June the twenty-eighth is going to be the first meeting for the Charter Review Committee. We'll get them off, uh, up and going. And then the Bethany Economic Development Authority that you all just recently appointed, uh, letters have gone out to them inviting them, just as we've done with our other committees, to contact us on best dates. So we try to accommodate the, as many of the members as we possibly can on, on the dates for those. And then, um, I, I mentioned at the last meeting during my report, we may or may not need to have a special call meeting regarding the approval of the library bid. We'll have to see how the, uh, the bid opening comes, and I don't know, Dr. Harris, if you have a library report or not. But, uh, I think I will stop there, and, uh, just some good news tonight.
Thank you. Item Ten, Council Members' Announcements, Comments, Proposals. Let's start with Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past couple of weeks, we had a meeting with the Bethany District Neighborhood Association, a vision meeting, uh, for residents, uh, in Ward Two, and it was very successful. We were able to have an open discussion about issues and concerns, and I'm encouraged by that. And I'm hopeful that we can also have a meeting for the Twenty-third Street Corridor that Councilman Moore could attend, as well as the, um, airport area. I think that these are, uh, great opportunities for the citizens and residents of Bethany to communicate what they are concerned about and where we need to work to improve Bethany. And I would also, um, like to reiterate that the residents of Bethany now have an opportunity to implement a recycling plan. And this is, uh, going to be a project that the city will work with the residents to find feasible alternatives. And I, if you're interested, if you want to participate, uh, please step up and, um, you know, be a part of the solution as opposed to the problem. That's all I have.
Thank you. Dr. Harris?
I'm excited to announce that the groundbreaking for the new library is going to be on Saturday, August twelfth, at ten AM. And acknowledging that Saturdays in August, or any day in August, is pretty hot. It's going to be a short groundbreaking. There will be no speeches, and everyone gets to dig dirt. So, kids are to bring their shovels and tonka trucks or whatever, and adults will all have shovels, and everyone gets to help with the groundbreaking. So it's going to be a fun event as well.
Thank you. Mr. Todd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I want to give kudos to Mr. David Buchanan. I went there a couple of days ago, and he gave me the yeoman's tour of all the public works in the water treatment facility. And if you have not done so, I encourage you to do so. Uh, he did a fabulous job, and I'm, I feel a little bit more up to speed. Now, I've got, I want to do the police station and the fire station, but, uh, I got a little better handle on what those guys do. And so it, it was well worth my time, and I hope it was worth his time, but it was, it's well worth your time. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a question. Who, who is in charge, or what group, or combination of group are gonna be running the Bethany Fourth of July? Haven't heard much about that. The Freedom Festival? I don't know. I, I, we may have donuts now, I don't know. We've been tempted with donuts. I mean, we have to reschedule.
What, what's your address at the lake? I'll send you donuts over there.
I don't know yet.
We formed a, a committee to be able to walk alongside Linda, the, you know, J.D.'s secretary, she's the one that does all the work, and to, they were stakeholders, people like some, uh, what's her name?
I remember we did that last year.
Mount E. Long.
Benet Long.
Benet Long at Southwestern. And so there's, to gather the people together to help take the weight off the city.
Right.
Essentially. And then, Lord willing, you know, we're gonna have that event, and then they're hopefully able to take it and run with it and grow the thing.
'Cause I remember last year we did that. I don't know if they were doing it this year, which is before the next meeting we have, July fourth. The Freedom Festival? I mean, are we running the, the city, Bethany, running the?
So the, and then, uh, along with what the mayor had said a moment ago, as far as, uh, some of the, the daytime things, the, the morning, the city is doing the, the parade, and it's being done just as it has been in the past. In fact, I believe Linda was going to email everyone, and, or Marla Nix was, uh, to let you know about where to line up if you're interested in being in the parade, and can line up a car and be in the parade. So the parade is, as it was before, and then the fireworks is as before. With the exception, SCU is helping to organize people to help with the actual, uh, like, we have to coordinate the turning off of the lights in time for the, the fireworks, so that's being done with their assistance. But the, um, but as far as, uh, the other things, uh, the, the kind of setup that's having to be done is, uh, different this year. So it's not gonna require so, all the heavy poles and, and heavy things that we had in the past. It took days and days and days to, to set up.
So will they be vendors, or?
Food vendors, there's carnival.
Okay.
Carnival things out there. Car shows out there.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all I wanted. Well, I also, we're not gonna be for the Fourth of July, and Peter Plank is, I wish I was half as good as him at doing things for vets. But, think of that, if, we, we take it for granted, we talk about going to the lake, having the day off, eating donuts. But think of that, buying a cup of coffee, buy their meal. Mr. Shire, he gets stuff bought for him all the time. So, uh, anyways, uh, I thank all the vets.
New car, motorhome.
Exactly, for being a vet. Thank you for your service, Mr. Shire, is what I'm saying.
Thank you for your dig.
Okay. Well, anyways. I had a good one about the Civil War, but I won't use it.
Okay. That was good enough.
Yeah. Anyways, just, just remember, the country we live in is the best country, you know, on the world. And just to be civil, I thank them.
Thank you. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I have nothing tonight.
Mr. McCutcheon?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Shire?
Yes, I, I have some, something I'd like to bring out, that probably very few people in this room have that problem. But, most baby boomers, or thirty percent of the baby boomers in this country, have Hep C. And it's a very easy test to find out. You don't even know you have it until it's too late. I've had it since nineteen sixty-four or sixty-five. And I didn't discover it until nineteen eighty-eight. And it has, it has a, a very difficult effect upon your liver. And I would suggest that every baby boomer possibly go have this test. And I would even go so far as to say, everybody that's a Vietnam veteran or possibly a Korean War veteran should do this and go to the Veterans Hospital and request it. It's a very simple test. It's a blood test, and it's, it's no real problem. But it's, they have a cure for it now. I have had the cure, but the damage has been done. And, uh, I think that you, you would, you know, as young as you fellows are and ladies, I think it would be a very, very beneficial act to perform. Because you, you just don't know. I mean, I didn't know I had it, and if anybody knows me, it never slowed me down, but it was, it's beginning to take effect. I should have lived to be a hundred years old. I don't think I will. And I would have probably wanted to be in the City Council if I was ninety, but I don't think I'll make that. But I, I do believe that, uh, the, the people that are within my range of voice should go have a test, and if they're veterans, they should go to Veterans Hospital. Veterans have a, a, a very high, because it's, it's transmitted by blood, blood test, or by blood... or by blood, blood transfusions and it's, it's very difficult. That's all I have to put forward, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, first, I'd like to thank Dr. Joyce again for leading our pledge tonight and for enduring the whole meeting. Thanks for staying. I did miss the last council meeting and during that time, I was kind of touring the central US, uh, visited seven states, most notably Mount Rushmore and while I was out and about, it wasn't, wasn't really my intention, but I did take a few notes, uh, some things that I saw that maybe we could do something like that in Bethany. Um, of course, Mount Rushmore is on a whole other scale.
We have the, Elden Line Park.
So, uh, but, just, just some small things that I noticed and, uh, I'll, I'll get that all together, JD, I might have a discussion with you about a couple of things, just small things though. Um, and lastly, as we've referenced several times, July 4th is coming up, uh, I'd like to see a lot of people out there, I know there will be a lot of local people, uh, by, by in Bethany, stay local, thank you.
Thank you. I have one thing I would like to mention that I've been thinking about and, and talking to a couple of people with, I, I feel like we as a city could, could do some of our citizens a huge favor and make the playing field a little more even. I know there are some students that in today's trend with school and homework and things of that nature, a lot of it is going towards being online and I, I would assume there are probably a lot of students that go home and don't have Wi-Fi access and I think that puts them at a disadvantage and so I would like to see, uh, us pursue the topic, the discussion and a little research as to what it would take for the city of Bethany to have our own Wi-Fi in the city. So, when people come to Bethany, they have Wi-Fi access and so some of these kids, when they go home and their parents or whatever, for whatever reason, don't have Wi-Fi in their home, they're, they have the same, the playing field is level for them and so I'd, I'd like to just see us kind of pursue that, what, what are the possibilities for our city to have Wi-Fi? Item 11 is new business. Is there any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until July 6th, 2017. I call to order the Bethany Public Works Authority. Item one is the consent docket, A through F. Do we have any questions or discussion or comments?
Mr. Mayor, may I clarify one thing real quick? At the last meeting, you might recall, uh, the agendas for the Public Works Authority, the Bethany Hospital Trust, as well as the Bethany Development Authority, we struck, we struck out one of the items and that was my mistake, uh, we, uh, have to approve in each of these various trusts, also the, the meetings that we had where we had the workshop and that's what that extra thing was, that we struck out and that was my fault that I didn't point that out and I apologize about that, so today, we're asking for that to be approved.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
With absolution.
Please cast your votes. Item two, approval of resolution 1444, adopting fiscal year 2018 budget for the general fund, miscellaneous other funds and various trusts, affirming the authority of the city manager to make transfers within the general fund and appropriating funds from the capital improvement fund for specified equipment and projects. Again, earlier, we had a lengthy discussion on it, uh, do I have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second that.
Please cast your votes. Item three, approval of, to reschedule July 11th, 2017 regular Bethany Public Works Authority meeting to Thursday, July 6th, 2017 at 7:00 AM. Donuts will be provided.
And coffee.
And coffee, do I have a motion?
So moved, donuts.
Please cast your votes. Item four, new business, do we have any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until July 6th, 2017. I call to order the Bethany Hospital Trust. Item one is consent docket, A through E. Any discussion? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item two, approval of resolution 1444. Fiscal year 2018 budget for general fund, miscellaneous other funds and various trusts, affirming the authority of the city manager to make transfers within the general fund and appropriating funds from the capital improvement fund for specified equipment and projects. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item three, approval to reschedule July 11th, 2017 regular Bethany Hospital Trust meeting to Thursday, July 6th, 2017 at 7:00 AM. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item four, new business. No new business, declare us adjourned until July 6th, 2017. I call to order the Bethany Development Authority. Item one is a consent docket, A through E. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item two, approval of resolution 1444, is it, do I legally have to read these every single time?
I think the resolution number...
That is driving me nuts.
How about I just say approval of resolution number 1444, as you've read?
That works for me, I wish somebody, I would have asked that question about an hour ago. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item three, approval to reschedule the July 11th, 2017 regular meeting to July 6th, like I read 14 times before. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Second.
So moved.
Cast your votes. Any new business?
You forgot to say with donuts and coffee.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. With no new business, I declare us adjourned until July 6th, 2017 and with that, we are adjourned, thanks for coming.